Okay. All right, well, six there, let's go ahead and open up the meeting and uh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, six thirty. Okay, Mr. Dunbar, would you manage to do a roll call, please?
Tom Ahern?
Here.
Ken Dunbar? Here. Bart Garber?
Here.
John Locke?
Here.
Ken Riley? John Terrace?
Here.
Steve Weaver?
Here.
Kirk Martyr?
Yes.
Bart Dunsmore? Absent.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the absence of Mr. Dunsmore.
Okay, and I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? How about a motion to accept the roll call, so? Don't need it, all right. Okay, if you wanna go ahead and look over the agenda for the day, see if there's anything you wanna add to it. Uh, if not, then uh.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, you wanna go through the meetings from October eighteenth? Get a brief look-through? Anything needs to be changed?
Yeah, it looked good to me, so I'll make the motion to approve the meeting minutes from October eighteenth as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, we have any citizens today? Uh, no, not today, so. Go on, move on to communications. Uh, I think we just presented, if everybody's had a chance to look at that, and we'll enter that as new communication. Is the site plan, the new development on the uh.
Well, that's not technically a communication, that was just information for you guys, so.
Communication is information, communication? We all looked it over.
Okay.
Okay.
Where is it?
Right down there at the end.
Okay, there's no communication, like I said, that was just general information for you folks to take a peek at, and that's gonna be coming up.
Prior to the official.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I just wanna give you guys a sneak peek.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Okay, how you put that?
All right, moving on. Uh, new business, discussing the Sinclair Metro Planning Commission Fall Workshop. Think Mr. Dunbar uh.
He wrote a very nice paper that.
I really liked the description of it.
Tried to keep it short, didn't wanna bore you.
Short, that's short.
I mean, I could've went on for a lot longer than that.
I mean, I really liked the ideas that they had for us, it was really, it was very informational.
Yep.
It was um. I liked it, I had a lot of fun with that.
Yeah.
Fun meetings.
It was definitely, like I said, there was a lot of stuff I didn't know that.
Right.
You know.
There's, there's a lot that's involved with planning and uh, you know, it's one of those in the note here somewhere, it's uh, you know, the uh, the, the, planning is a full-time job. Well, maybe a lot of communities.
Well, that's what we said, we're a little, we're this little baby city, you know, trying to die.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those, you know what, you guys are all doing community service right now.
Yeah. Um, there were, um, there was the, what was it, the?
We're all being felons, too.
Pardon?
And we're not even felons.
We're not even.
No, but you know what, if you get in trouble down the road, you can say, I've done my community service.
Yeah, you already done it, pretty good on it.
Um, I did end up emailing the lawyer that presented at the um, at the seminar, because he talked about a grant that could give the city access to a uh, a full-time planner, just, you know, free of charge. Um, I looked more into it, and I'm not totally sure that it is actually a grant so much it is, uh, so much as it is a program put on by the Michigan Acad- uh, Economic Development Corporation, um, and.
So, it would be somewhat in the lines of what we ended up having, you know, when we, the, the, the current master plan, you know, where we had a couple planners who came here and worked with us and and, and maybe this has been developed since then, because, you know, after that, they kinda got a little sticky spot, because they spent so much time with us.
Yeah.
Developing the master plan that we have now, which is, you know, it's, it's a pretty good master plan, we're just tweaking the numbers on it.
Right.
And it meets a lot of the guidelines that you have spelled out in here, too, so.
Yeah, he, he did, they did cover the guidelines.
Yes.
And, and a lot of the guidelines in our current master plan, I mean, I think this, this is pretty well-covered, and then I think what we're doing now is just kinda tweaking it to bring it up to date.
Yes. Um, that being said, if we did wanna look into the program further, it's the RCC program, I got the person's contact information, although we're on the border of the.
The two?
The two, so I'm not sure if we could share us.
Yeah, last time it was McComb County that, you know, we had a couple planners here, so.
Um, I know Richmond is a part of the RCC program, at least listed on the website, and I've downloaded the thirty-page PDF on it, it's in the Dropbox if anyone cares to read it. Um, and then everything presented to us is also in the Dropbox, under referential material, so.
I saw that, I think we're here. Beautiful. What's something we can? I guess, you know, consider, as we reached out already to McComb.
I d- definitely would wanna read into what exactly the, you know, what exactly it means to be a.
Sure.
A redevelopment-ready community, 'cause that's what they, that's what the RRC program is. And I, I mean, do they wanna go through your entire code book, like what, I don't know what that means at this point.
Right, and it's, it's one of those in planning before in the past where, you know, they get into, you know, plan urban development, and it's like, we're one mile by one mile, how much can we get into this?
Right.
You know, and, and that's the thing, this is working with the McComb planners, they had a, a pretty good understanding after being around here for a while. You know, how much depth do we need to get into?
Yeah.
Might be something similar like Downtown Development Authority.
Right.
Or all that same thing, which, you know, maybe at some point might make sense to look at something like that.
There was one other thing that they covered that is not on here, where they, just in passing, mentioned a sign ordinance, which made me look up our sign ordinance, and it led me to a question, who's our building inspector?
We.
Mel, Mel McNabb.
Mel McNabb.
And he does expect, inspect all of the work prior to it being done?
For a sign? Or what type of sign?
Permit.
It just, it, it said any sign, and specifically references ones that, um, project into the public right-of-way, which I noticed is a lot of the signs in our downtown, and the new Joyology sign on, uh, on M-19 protrudes into the public right-of-way, and according to our court, uh, our court.
Our, our code probably doesn't have anything that addresses anything that's probably illuminated or.
No, but.
I think we do, there's a, there's a bit of language in there for signs, is there?
But my one point is just the one, one fifty, one fifty point oh oh six B says no sign uh, other than a municipal sign shall protrude into the public right-of-way, which that new Joyology sign does.
Define protrude.
Um, I, I think they use the word hangover, which we don't define in our code of ordinances, at least as far as I could tell.
Hangover what, though?
The sidewalk?
It hangs over the sidewalk.
Oh, so if the sign was actually to fall, it could fall on the sidewalk? And not, and you don't have that variance there where it was the, come off the building due to rust or weathering? Like, it would slide down and just?
'Cause their, their sign, their sign on Ordman, if it fell, would fall onto their patio or whatever, which that's not the city's problem. Um, and I'm, I'm assuming the other sign, or I'm assuming the other businesses either predate the ordinance or, you know, got the proper permits and stuff. Um, I'm not sure, you know.
Well, Mel, Mel's not been our building inspector for all that long.
Okay.
And he shares, I mean, he's not just us, he's part of.
Yeah, he's all over the place, and he was our building inspector way back.
Mel is ours.
But Mel also works for other municipalities. I just, I just talked to him about it.
Yeah, so did I, that's one of the reasons, I know, he came in, and so he told me that he, he works here, I wanna say maybe Armada in Burrville?
Yeah, he does Burrville and Armada, yeah.
I don't know if he does anything else, he's very knowledgeable.
Yeah.
Where does the public right-of-way start, where is there property line?
I, I mean. I would assume, I would assume it's from the middle of the road.
Sixty-six feet on M-19.
Yeah, I would say that part of their, their building is probably in the road right-of-way.
The hotel's in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Oh, it's in.
Yeah, my house is in the right-of-way, and so is the hotel.
Yeah, but your grandfathered in for the most part now, 'cause you were there prior.
So, we do, 'cause I work with a lot of utility easements, so I know the road right-of-way, that's usually where they want.
It, in general, if you look to see where a utility pole is, whether it be DTE or Horizon, that more than likely is at the edge of the road right-of-way, 'cause that's where they, most of the time, that's where they want you to be. And if it's not the road right-of-way, then you have to get a private easement to put that, that in there, so. Like I said, like, like you just mentioned, I, I bet you that there's a lot of properties that are in the road right-of-way now, but they've been in the road right-of-way.
Right, but they would be grandfathered in, yeah, Joyology is a new business with new signage.
The building is, but the signage may be.
The signage may be.
And I don't know how big a pan of worms that is.
Easy enough, look into, we're, we're, we're gonna have an enforcement officer and for.
Like you said, there's, there's someone that's gonna be hired.
Been hired, since they've sworn in at this point, but it's not to go out and write tickets, it'll be able to help them.
Yeah, inform.
So, how do you?
Hold the word for people and figure it out before, you know, anybody starts putting the gloves on them.
Yeah, you're not, like you said, I think you mentioned that before, this is not to get anybody in trouble.
Only people just blatantly ignore after, you know, certain little towns.
I noticed they did take down one of their banners, though, that's kind of more of a, an issue I think is we're trying to keep our community looking clean and neat and nice, and we got these cheap banners tied to the front of the building.
And I think they put those up before they got their current sign, yeah?
They put the, uh, the one was up for a while before they finished the building, and then when it opened, they had like three of them running up the building, and they finally took them down, now they just got the one across the front, but you know, it's, that's something, if we make them take down the other side or push them, maybe they'll start putting up banners and flags out front, you know.
With them being on a corner.
That looks cheesy.
With them being on a corner lot, though, that would probably also restrict their, where they're allowed to put signs, 'cause you can't block visibility, and so.
It's our, it's our main intersection, too, we want our main intersection for our community to look halfway appealing, right?
Sure. Good catch.
I, I don't think that, I don't think that's a matter for the planning commission probably, but I thought I would bring it up, having noticed it.
Yeah, give us one. Whatever information.
That is very good, we need to look at all that stuff. But we also gotta pick and choose battles, too.
That's what I said, where you're at.
Watch cautiously.
Yeah.
Right. Be careful of the ground beneath you.
Right.
All right, anything else in regards to new business, everybody was pretty good on the?
Is that different communications?
Is that for, would that be communication, would that be, that's basically?
That was a discussion of the, the Fall Workshop.
Yeah, the Fall Workshop.
They're gonna get off the, off the board, so, we just need to move on down, finish this, it's correct.
All right, moving on. I finished reviewing the bylaws.
Thank you.
Do you have these in here also, Ken, the bylaws?
Uh, yes, uh, if you would like to go to today's meeting packet, they're, they're in there. Um, I did make one substantive change since our last, uh, last revision.
Right here?
Um. Yep, eleven eight, yep, so if you scroll down, you should see the by, bylaws, Memphis Planning Commission's the clean version, and then redlined bylaws at the bottom, isn't it?
That's one that we want.
Yep, um, so that includes the changes from the last meeting as well, where I, I was not present at the following meeting to discuss the changes, but I just did formatting changes, um. Actually, I don't think this is my redlined copy.
You go down, usually that's what I do, is it's, I go, oh, there's redline, yeah.
Yeah, um.
If my mouse worked, I'd throw the mouse down and just let you drive.
Looks like I accidentally did the clean version instead of the redlined, but, um, it was essentially just formatting changes. Uh, instead of the page number being on the top left, which is where you staple most things, I moved it down to the bottom middle so that you could, uh.
Clean version.
Section two nineteen.
Yeah, so you can see it, um, and then the section, I think it was section five, uh, letter O, I think that's the section I made the substantive, substantive change to.
Section five E F, five meetings?
Yep, so five meetings, and then I'm gonna say O.
Oh. We're getting there.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, placement of items on the agenda.
Yes, so, section, um, uh, right there, three, the deadline to add items requiring action. I added the language requiring action to both three and four, just because there's a lot of times where we're at the meeting and uh, you know, Steve would like to update us on, you know, things going on with the council, and we add those to the agenda, and I didn't wanna, I didn't wanna prohibit such discussion being added to the agenda, so I just limited things being added that would need action.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that area, I can, I can. Was there?
Possible to me.
Anywhere else, Mr. Dunbar?
Um, no, that was the only substantive change, everything else was just, I, I, I defined it as the commission, and, and the first read-through, I noticed some places I referred to it as the commission, and some places, I actually referred to it as the planning commission, so I made that uniform, removing the word planning and, uh, parts, and um, there was a couple times where I had justified my paragraph, and I think I did that, so, just.
Okay, just cleaned it up a little bit?
Yep, just cleaned it up.
Okay, so, do we need to print a final copy of that for, for approval of the bylaws at the next meeting?
I, I believe we could, I believe we could just vote to approve them as-is, but I'm more than happy to print off. Uh, do we all want new physical copies?
Yeah, what's the general, what's the general consensus on that?
'Cause the only difference, like I said, is the formatting changes and the addition of those two words.
We looked over a hard copy prior, so, yeah, if you're bringing it up, I don't think, we have to wait.
Okay.
That would be my take on it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, so.
And if anyone wants new copies, we can print off the.
Yeah, let's not kill some more trees.
Okay, but that's, that's the whole purpose of the projector, so, we could do it all, I'll get a new mouse for Mr. Dunbar, so he's able to
zip through everything, 'cause he's very.
Well, then I'll make a motion to accept the amended bylaws for the planning commission.
And I will second that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried.
Thanks again, Ken.
Yes, thank you, that's awesome.
And as, as we come across things that we, you know, this isn't really applicable to our town, we can, we can edit it, and it just takes another vote of us, so we can feel free to change it as we need.
Right, that's what I was looking at, on the next topic is reviewing the master plan, I know we kinda got off task on that.
I'm so sorry, who, um, seconded that motion?
I seconded it, I think. Uh, going back to the master plan, see, what do we have that, master plan? Uh, yeah, but you, let's just scroll down here. This is so organized, it's utterly ridiculous. I love it. Uh, what do we need, the clean version? Ken, on that, right now?
The clean version would just be our most recent changes without, without the redlines.
Okay. So, this is what we last worked on, um, and Mr. Dunbar cleaned it up. And I can try to make it a little bit smaller, so we can get a little better aspect on here, of what we've been working on, so we're, now we're in the community profile with the Democratic and, uh, economic analysis, is this where page fifteen is at, or have we got a?
So, I got fifteen here, I think it's a little bit.
Is that what we were working on, was page fifteen?
I think so.
Okay, oh, yeah, the stipulation part, okay, yes. Let me try to scroll down to fifteen. Which one, thirteen? Nope, fourteen's not there, of course, fourteen, mm.
Uh, I might, oh yeah, it's just section two that we had current, is that right?
Yeah, we did section two, but we were looking at page fifteen, um, here, I'll bring up the.
I, I believe I typed up your proposed changes, I must not have.
Um.
On fifteen.
I'm not sure, this, I did two different things, I don't know if we actually went.
We were.
I got a few offside here, thinking that we were gonna.
Page fifteen, and we were thinking that most.
Delete a few.
And then you wrote up a page that we talked about.
Yeah, that was, uh, like, the Outlook or, what the heck was it?
That was page fifteen, I think, was what it was.
Was it fifteen?
I thought, I thought it was, I, 'cause I remembered, I, I liked, can't remember what the final sentence was, sentence was, but I know I really liked it.
Yeah, we, so, we already adopted that, I believe.
I, I believe so as well.
We, we okayed that.
And then we said that, from, we believe, section two was complete, the only thing in section two that we haven't tackled was prior to her um, leaving the commission, Tammy, uh, presented us with the list of businesses that have licenses within the city, and we had.
That says here.
And we had discussed about including this in section two as opposed to.
This is a table or something?
Uh, yes, we would have, we'd have to make it a table, but this was from the, from the city, and it's just a list of all the, um, business licenses for the.
Yeah, that's, that's good information, you have it in there, so.
Almost like a Chamber of Commerce kind of thing, where putting this in there in lieu of that?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to think about how we would like to include it into section two, but.
I'm, I'm just looking at, I just kinda jumped out at me for the, um, for the honeybee cafe.
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah, it's not that anymore.
That's not there anymore.
Right, we.
Whatever it is.
We could definitely figure out a placeholder of where we'd like to include it in section two, and then, you know, in a couple months, get the updated twenty twenty-four business licenses.
Okay.
Fifteen minutes before we've hit final approval.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. All right, so we're good on that? So, we basically gotta tackle section three. And this is redline, so what we don't hear. This is sixty-three pages, is just what we need. All things. Can we run this down? What page is section two on, uh, Steve, where do we start?
Picking up on sixteen is the picture, and then seventeen actually starts with, uh, City of Memphis Master Plan Existing Land Use and Zoning.
Okay, okay. That's where you all redlined, they got all that corrected. Sorry, sorry, my eyes are squibbling too, on that. Come on.
Yes.
Oh.
Whoa.
What?
No, nothing.
Okay. Yeah, this is all section two.
Seventeen.
Okay, yeah, 'cause here's fifteen, that's what we were talking about, economic considerations.
Is that the updated one?
Uh, this is our most current one, it should be, Frank.
Yeah.
This looks at red, this is redline on it.
Let me just see the top there, the red, make sure. Yeah, 'cause we took out a sentence most important, the realization the city would be faced with unstable population.
Yeah.
Okay, is that out of there?
Uh, I think, yeah, it was right in the third, it was like the second line.
Although.
Nope, there it is, right here.
Oh, yeah.
It says that.
All right, that's, that's not the updated one.
I'll have to, I'll have to look on my computer for that or something.
Okay, that's one, make sure that.
All right, awesome.
We want that to sneak back in there.
Yeah, no. Okay, awesome. So, existing land use and zoning.
Yeah, it's, it actually starts it out right there.
Okay. Okay, awesome, I didn't bring my notebook in with me. So, if everybody see that, or you want me to make it a little bit bigger?
I got it.
Yeah, I, I can see what I want.
Okay, 'cause I got the.
It's getting more one point one two square miles. It's a little bigger than I thought.
Yeah, awesome, and this map here, I actually had a copy of this map, Amber sent me, and then I printed up on the big one there, and then we, I had it in Dropbox, and it just.
Disappeared?
It disappeared, because, uh, the new, uh, area that they were talking about, um, I was actually, what's wrong with it? Was able to put labels in there. So, if you see anything here that we need to change, um, Mr. Dunbar has his copy, um, that he can make his, make comments on, and we can redline it from there.
Mm-hmm.
Is that good with you?
Yeah.
Okay, I said, I really like the way you're doing this, it's awesome.
We can keep doing that.
That's the next time, I'll, I'll bring in a mouse and a keyboard, something, and I'll just say, here you go, it's all yours, I'll just set it up. Okay, if you don't see anything there, just tell me to flip the pages, and we'll flip the pages. Any comments there in regards to residential? We're done, Mr. Mayor? Anything from your end?
No, I mean, I think, I mean, the thing, yeah, you can't, you know, 'cause it's still fifty-four percent of the original, you know?
Oh, in regards to residential land use?
Yeah.
How do we research that, is that?
Well, we just add a fifteen acres to that, uh, Memphis, Memphis property.
Right, so that's a change, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's fifteen acres, fairly significant, uh, for fourteen acres.
Same, yeah, so it was the, uh.
So, will we have a reduction in residential acreage and increase in commercial?
No, no, we increased residential from four fourteen to four twenty-nine.
Oh, okay, with the new development.
Right, fifteen acres on the corner.
Okay.
Is four twenty-nine a good, that's correct, that's a good number?
I would think, right, Steve?
Yeah, it's fifteen, I know it's right about fifteen acres.
Are they saying that four hundred and fourteen is the fifty-four percent, or there's four hundred and fourteen acres total?
Four hundred and fourteen acres, and we've just, we're, we're gonna increase it by fifteen acres.
Well, yeah, I didn't know if that's what I meant, that's what I was asking.
What was the current zoning there, current? That probably was already, uh, residential, I think.
Well, I got the map right there.
I don't know, because it was there.
Oh, it is.
Can you see it?
Maybe we don't have a chance.
Yeah, that, it says it's R-one A on the, the zoning.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, it is already zoned as residential?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, 'cause they had farm fields in it, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not A-one, it's not a.
The only thing that would change is gonna change here.
We changed it to R-one, and we rezoned it to R-one M, we made the.
And we're not there yet, so.
Okay.
Well, yes, we, yes, we did.
Yes, we did, yeah, we did earlier this year.
Still residential.
Right, it's just, it's just multiple instead of.
If it was residential, then it was farmed. Well, across the road, too, that was residential, but it was farmed.
Well, simply as a mobile home, so.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay, well, I guess.
So, picking strawberries on that, yeah.
So, I just say, I guess, my question, this is where I'm just making, trying to understand it.
Sure.
So, when they're saying residential land use composed fifty-four percent, fifty-four percent is four hundred and fourteen acres, so we have eight hundred acres?
I, I believe that's right, 'cause if you look down at commercial.
That's what I was trying to figure, you know what I mean?
Yeah, eleven percent, eleven percent, the list says eighty-four acres.
That's, okay, so that's, they're talking about the overall.
The overall, they're just giving you a.
So, we didn't really increase the amount of acres that were put in residential, 'cause it was already zoned residential.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, square is six hundred and forty acres, so we're a little bit bigger than that.
Okay, all right, moving down to commercial, numbers are, first, pretty pretty accurate there.
Yeah, but I hope we would expand it a little bit.
Burbish looks good.
The one thing I, that stood out to me, though, before we even reached the residential, staff from the McComb County Department of Planning and Economic Development updated the land use inventory in the fall of twenty-eleven, does that, do we need to reach out to them to confirm our land use inventory, or is that something that can be omitted? Um, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what that's conveying.
I think they're a little verbose in all the stuff they've written up here.
Yeah, they kinda, yeah.
Talks it, I've, I'd agree with that.
I, yeah, I, I follow up section.
Kinda do a well, but now, it's twelve years ago.
Right, yeah, and if, if that's the last time we, you know, updated it, I don't know that we need to.
I would completely remove that sentence, staff from the McComb County Department all the way to the fall of twenty eleven, let's cut that out, so it's just.
I think you could turn around and, and eliminate that whole paragraph. Do we really need to have that in there, I don't know.
Well, given where it says inventory uses such or assigned land use codes for each barrel within the city, including roads and Bell River. I mean, that way it shows at least where we compiled our data from, in, in a way.
Okay, yeah, yeah, after the two thousand eleven.
You understand? Yeah.
Two thousand eleven, keep that, and omit everything before that.
Correct.
Yes.
You know, actually, at, at the meeting last night, uh Larry Wilson, we, we adopted some language, specifically said what our zones were.
Right.
It may not hurt just to put those, maybe those in here, we could use the same language, but say, you know, all land within these classifieds is following, and just, cause we, we include, we don't have C one into this description here.
Hmm.
Okay.
So we shouldn't make no other, but we, just simple, whatever it is, we have.
R one A.
R one, R one B, RM, residential multiple, we got light industrial, right, um.
Find, find a way to fit that in there?
Just to rewrite that second sentence, just to uh.
Right.
Make it a little shorter, and, and just include those, and that way we have the exact same thing that's in our ordinance book now, for zoning areas, make it so.
Uh, following generalized land use as categories, so we have to have a C bar.
May I have that in that paragraph, where it says residential, put in parentheses, maybe R one A and put it classified hundred there?
No, I don't.
Or just assess or assigned land codes are as follows, you know, and just list them that way, just to suggest.
Okay.
I like when you, and, and mirroring, if it's the same thing that's in the other, I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, cause that will be updated in the book when we, it's on the book now, we adopted it, yeah, last night, so, and that was the purpose, was to get that C one.
Would it be possible to get that specific language?
Yeah, yeah, I can uh, I can text it to you.
Mr. Riley, this turns, anything on that, guys got any thoughts on it? Barbara, anything?
Um, it's off subject, but I meant to bring it up once we were talking about the Saint Clair, I should have, autumn fall workshop. Um, while we were there, they discussed um commission members using.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Designated or city provided emails, that way.
I was gonna run that down here on the comments from commissioners.
Um, that, that way, specifically, you know, we had that email vote, and now technically we're, our emails could be subpoenaed, you know, just.
All, anything that that's your email that you use, they get all of it.
Right, so where it wouldn't be that hard to just.
The attorney didn't say that.
I would assume it wouldn't be too hard to just get, you know, all of our names at City of Memphis, it doesn't even have to be, you know, commission specific, cause you know, you're on the council and the planning commission, and, um, but just something to.
Can we do that through, can we do that through the ci- the actual city, you know, to our web, not really, our webpage?
You mean setting up an email for anybody here?
Yeah, set up an email to the city, yeah.
I don't know, I think that's something that you probably touched base with Donna about.
Okay, I'll check with her on that.
You guys do that, look at that.
Yeah, you, the attorney just said you're, you're opening yourself up, cause somebody, this happened.
Okay. That is.
And it's one of those, when you do your personal stuff, they can dive into everything that you do personally, that's why I carry a phone for the city.
Yeah, he said. Everything. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a city's email, you know, so.
Hi.
Right.
Good catch.
Yeah.
That's important. I'll, I'll stop by tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And I'll, um, and I'll talk with Donna about it.
Yeah.
If it's not, I mean, if, if not, we can always.
Yeah, but I'm, for a month or under, sent you an email.
Yeah.
Well, I said, I, I mean, I mean, if, if there's something that the city.
Close that one out, but everyone, yeah, just, uh, no longer exists.
But if there's something that the city um can't do, where we basically just go to currently dot com and do first name dot last name, and currently dot com.
And you know, the thing is, is it tied to all that too, when text messages go around.
Yeah.
That can be all subpoenaed too.
What's that?
Can we tie, tie that into, to this program somehow, as far as a communication tool?
And that's if we.
Well, if we want, well, there's, there's an email already for uh Memphis Planning, so if, you know, the, the contractors are, you know, the, that are starting that up, and they wanna communicate with the planning commission, we have the memphisplanning@currently.com as a quote unquote of, an official email, or strictly for business, you know, for business communication.
Do we all use that same one?
I don't think that creates a lot of transparency though, like, yeah, we could all just use Memphis Planning Commission, but I don't know that that
Right, but then, then it'd be like.
is the best practice, cause it could get confusing of, well, I didn't send that, I just sent that, you know, it's like where.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Well, that's, that's kinda like, you know, when we end up with these group texts that go out.
Yeah.
And it's one of those, it's like, Tom, I don't think you're on my phone.
Yeah, to her.
Well, no, I mean, I don't have you in my phone, so I see numbers pop up, and, and again, this stuff pops up on my personal cell phone,
Oh, I bet.
And you're like.
Yeah.
which nobody should be using that number for city business, it should be the city phone, which is a thirty six eleven number, but almost nobody uses it.
Right.
Yeah, which one do I?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll have to get that number, they show you the right one. He did say that you could send in your personal email that it would not be, if, if you were sending out a notification saying, board meeting tonight at seven thirty, that was completely fine, that's not subpoenable, or does not at all create a problem, it's when you're using it to conduct
Yeah, you gotta give me your own.
So if you're getting, he's like, you can get a notification, your email, your personal business, either's meeting, you're okay, but if you start using it to
No, when you start to, you're up the wall.
Yeah.
communicate back and forth, then it becomes.
And like I said, I don't have your.
How would they even know what's in there, to, to subpoena, like you said, if you just sent out this meeting, what do you got, T word for?
I don't have your number, I'm just gonna. I can't get these, like, group texts, or there's seven people on it.
You're gonna subpoena everything anyway, then find out that they're, then they still have access to it.
Yeah, we have my own.
I mean, I, I couldn't really see where you're coming from, but I'm listening something.
So.
That, if they get in there, they have to find that, even though it's like you said, it's just, hey, meeting tonight.
That's just what the attorney said, yeah.
No, I get it.
Yeah.
She definitely said it limits your.
I'm gonna think he's a little incorrect in there, but that's.
He seemed to imply that it made it less likely, but you could still, you know, get.
Without reading email, they don't even know, so they gotta get in there to see it, to read it, to say, hey, it's not.
Right. But they, if we all got, if we all got designated emails, preferably city provided.
So, Tom's gonna check into that tomorrow.
I will check into that tomorrow.
We can just do all business through that, no more text change, it's just, this is just.
Absolutely, I will cha- I will check with Donna tomorrow on that.
Yeah, and the nice thing about it would be, when we did that um email vote, I would have been able to just include those emails in the meeting minutes, it's right on the, it's right on the record.
Done, okay.
Done, is it, full transparency, but it's our personal email, so I didn't wanna include those in the public record, so, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. Yeah, let's, um, I'll check with Donna on it tomorrow about getting those separate emails on that. Um, for now, just get, but we'll just uh, we'll get, we'll come back around to that after we do a little bit more on the master plan.
Yeah.
And we'll do comments for commissioners on that, and we'll, we'll, about, we'll, we'll talk about.
Unfinished business item?
I'm sorry, we can make that an unfinished business item.
Make that an unfinished.
Ooh, look at that, now we got some stuff.
That, that's a great idea, unfinished business item, but, unfinished business item of separate emails for any commissioner business. I will check with the city clerk, I'm off getting that taken care of. Sound like a plan?
Sound like a plan.
Alright, moving on. Uh, so we got uh, Mr. Weaver was uh talking about uh the zones, having added in the, in the language up there. Oh, I'm sorry, wrong way.
Yeah, adding.
Yeah, adding it to where it says it, right. Removing the uh McComb County Department.
All the way up to twenty eleven.
All the way up to twenty eleven. And then, uh.
Well, then the thing is, is you need uh, following the inventory ways.
Let's see, it's right here, Lynn, these categories residential, commercial, industrial. We can somehow fit it in there where R one A, R one M. The, or the different zones.
I'll, I'll write that up and I'll send it, I'll send it.
Send it to Mr. Dunbar and then um.
I'll just clean up the language a little bit, get rid of the first part of it, and I'll, and I'll just do a whole.
Yeah, because if you start off next year with the, the inventory is based.
The inventory used, success or assigned land use jobs. Oh, this inventory used.
Yeah, one inventory, cause that's referring to the previous.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just gonna blow that out of there.
All right, so you want, you wanna, you wanna take a look at that? Rewrite that.
Yeah, let me just rewrite that.
Steve's gonna rewrite that whole paragraph.
Just, just that second sentence, we're gonna, we're asking the first sentence out of there. The following section provides an inventory of land usage.
Okay, yes.
Blah, 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 and then I'll start off with this inventory. Uh, let me just edit that. I'll send, I'll send it to Ken, he can, he can see it. He likes it, if he wants to tweak it, he can, then we'll.
Okay, sounds good.
So next under residential, I think we're pretty good with the uh, the amount of land usage.
Right, there's nothing really has changed. How much can you change in a square mile?
Commercial hasn't changed.
All right. Land use and zoning. I like how, I mean, it skips from money to go to the next page.
So next is the central business, right?
That's pretty much.
Industrial's pretty much the same, that already is.
That's all pretty much the same, I, I, you know, our land usage is, that really changed just quite a while.
Maybe we got a few, but we're, we're not there yet, but I think we gotta confirm those boundaries on uh, central business district.
Yes.
Cause there was a couple of little wiggles there, but we, we can deal with that when we get to the maps. Cause there's descriptions. And uh, one of these pages, those things we need to change. Couple of hot parts is gotta edit on.
Okay. So we're good here on the.
Yeah, I think the language is fine.
Like you said, we haven't really changed much.
No, it's basically long N nineteen and Boardman Road.
Not unless we hand X Richmond down too. Pick up some cows. Institutional, public, quasi-publican organization. Me, I'm, I'm, I'm never.
The only thing we might have to look at is, what do we have that's vacant because we're filling it up? You know, fifteen acres on the corner, we're filling it up.
Right.
Uh, there's been a few other houses going in, you know, so. How do we gather that? Yeah, so the vacant part changed.
Yeah. What, what about this institutional, public, quasi-publican organization, and that's.
It's, that's a lot of blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, you know, again, that's, that's putting more information, it might mean some of the same things as our zoning.
Well, governmental facilities, is that this building that we're in right now?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm just talking about that, it sounds like we got some.
Government, so, okay, I, all right, I'm looking at it, I guess I, I understand. Public buildings, community buildings. Okay.
Comments, questions?
Twenty-five percent.
Seems like a lot. Well, we gotta get into, so if you get into this quasi, it's like, yeah, okay, the Lions Club.
Right.
The church, the library.
The, the three churches.
Schools. You know, I mean, you look at the, the Lions Club, you don't think about how much property they have. Fifteen acres.
Yeah, a lot of acres there. Well, that, so, that hasn't changed since.
Hundred ninety, that's a long way from that. Well, I don't know, church, schoo- schools take up quite a bit.
Schools, yeah, if you look at what the schools have on both sides of the road.
Yeah, a lot of acres there.
Yeah, that could be a couple forty's actually.
And the, the church, you know, they're probably at twenty plus.
Baptist church. You have a church over here, a church.
There's a church on church.
Yeah.
Another little Baptist church where the, where the
where the.
Library is. Oh, no, I think, okay, you have a Catholic church.
We have a little church on church, and then a Methodist church, and we got the Baptist church, and then they got the.
Catholic church on the road.
Church in there.
That's right. Burning one and repenting the other two. All right.
Okay.
Moving on, vacant land, that looks pretty accurate.
I think that's what you're talking to. What you're saying, you're gonna have to like, you know, knock fifteen acres off of that, because it's gonna be developed, I mean.
Which would also change the percentage.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, the acres and the percentage will change. If we're, you know, personally gonna have fifteen acres developed on the corner.
Should we double check that those are the, those fifteen acres are the only um,
Developed?
Developed?
Well, no, it's one of those, where, where the pop-up houses, I don't know. I don't think of any new ones in town really. But I don't get off the. You know, I mean, I don't, I don't make it much around the block. So I mean.
I can't think of anything, you know, really often.
Just.
No, I think, what I've seen for.
Nothing on your, your side.
So what I've seen for building permits has been barns, garages, blah, 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 so. I mean, I think it's gonna be that and across the roads from that house. Yeah, there's, they got that marked out over there. Right. They got a different. Bell River, opposite of Bell River.
The same guy.
Yeah, but it's on the opposite side of the road. Yeah, and that's uh, what is that? That's a. Yeah. And that's like five acres there, right?
Eight. From stage two, seven point three or something, right.
Yeah. It's already started, they already got some marks out there.
I've seen them, yeah, so. I, I don't, to me, I'm just, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, wow, we're adding a hundred and, minimum a hundred and twenty cars that are gonna drive past your house. Every single day.
And a road, and my road is. They could either go out that way.
In shitty condition.
Or they're gonna come out that way. Well, that's gonna be on city council's list, I mean, now that we got some research projects.
All they have is equipment that's gonna come down there on that road that's in really bad shit.
Well, that's, that's part of the development too, is that they're gonna have to cover repairing the roads after they're done.
I mean, repairing them in a condition that they're, how we repair them now are, that you're gonna.
Or they're gonna put it in their road.
You're gonna dump some dirt in a hole and patch over it. That, cause that's what we do, we say, we drove.
Bucket of coal batch.
Yeah, exactly.
I hope at least.
That's my point, it's, it's like.
Chip and seal it. Yeah, I kinda like Pratt being all chopped up, and that slows everybody down.
This is a lot of people we're adding to the community, man.
Oh, yeah.
The numbers that we're adding here, I mean, if there's two people, or three people, or also we're, we're.
So there are three bedrooms, these are three bedrooms, yeah.
You got almost two hundred people added just in this little area here, and then you're gonna do it across the street. We can get future business owners and. That's, there's three people per family, right?
You know, we got fifteen houses now that are almost completed.
Call that fifty people, just three. It's a good, it's a good, it's a good sign over here. It's a good sign on the development of the city.
But I'm happy to say at least it's families, you know, I just.
Well, let's get back to this then. Sorry, I got sidetracked.
No, that's, well, I'm with you too, I think, I think.
I'm just wondering if you think about this stuff, I mean, there's a lot of people.
We think about it at my house.
Yeah.
However, uh, you say they're only gonna go out this way, or this.
They'll be going down Bell River to the other way too.
Yeah, be either or, uh, but that's just, that's growing pains too, and I mean, I gotta bite the bullet, that's just the way it is.
So what do you think of this?
Hey, you know what, now we'll have more taxpayers to pay to fix the road.
Well, you know, I. Kurt, do you think, do you think they're gonna start that Bell River project this fall?
I don't think so, I'm thinking it's gonna be.
Oh, Bell River, out there? No, that's gonna be in the next year.
Next year. Well, once that's complete, you know, we'll have, Bell River's gonna be done from the county line up to Boardman Road. So within a couple of years, then I think we really do, you know.
It's, it's, it's one of those.
Not our valley work here, but.
The roads are one piece at a time, it's.
Bell River, the crap's gonna have to get.
Hey, well, you know what? Let's look at Union Street, nobody bitches about Union Street, cause they don't drive on it, but it's almost gravel.
Yeah, right, yeah.
It's a cedar.
Couple like that, yeah.
Cedar's a cedar.
Cedar's plus is bad.
Cedar, yeah, as well, it's, it's one piece at a time. I mean, we just spent, you know, almost a million dollars on Boardman Road. We got a lot of state funding. We've got funding that's coming through St. Clair County and Riley Township to fix Bell River Road. Which has been a long time.
Yeah, we're gonna get there.
It's, it's, it's gonna be.
We moved, we removed the last river that we had in the last twenty years.
It looks great too, I mean, that's a, that's a huge improvement there. And if you do the same thing on the other side of Boardman now, you know, with that cord to carry on, then you got new, you know, Bell River Road, just imagine, that's a whole different look when you're driving down there.
Yeah, that's like future planning we're thinking about, what we're doing.
Podcast, though, man.
Or, let's, 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 he must.
Let's get back on this, cause like I said, this, I, I, what I'd like, I mean, in theory, we should go get this done within the next couple of meetings. Is what I'm hoping. Praying. To get this done, get this completed.
So we're, going with this, we just gotta check our. So we're good up to page eighteen, the only thing we have to look at is the percentage and the acreage is correct. Okay.
Got that, Mr. Dunbar?
Mm-hmm.
All right, moving on, page nineteen.
All right, who's gonna do that, the, the sixty acres and eight percent? Somebody taking that on, or?
I mean, if it's just minusing tw- uh, what you said, fifteen and seven. Oh, just gonna do the fifteen at the section across the street.
Or how about if we just add approximately fifty acres?
We could just.
Yeah.
You know, you have to break a percent or something.
Put it as a.
Someone wants to do the math, they can, but.
I like that idea. Just scroll back up for a second.
Sure.
That gets us, if we say approximately, we'll qualify.
Approximately.
Right, approximately, uh, you know, let's sixty, fifty, forty-five acres, and then, you know, the percentage adjusted.
I would just leave the percentage out.
Why not?
These guys, when they write this stuff up, I mean, they just wanna put every little period.
I, I would say we should be consistent, if we're going to remove the percentage there, we should remove it.
Everywhere.
Remove it everywhere, take it. Remove the percentage, cause that's, I mean, cause you're like really looking to.
And, and you know, that, that's still, I, I think that, that number seems way too low. Because if you look at back behind the church and that, I think the number's wrong.
Okay.
I really think the number's way off.
Maybe we need to throw down on this a little more than.
I was gonna say, do we need to reach out to the Michigan or Macomb County Department of Planning and Economic Development, is that?
I mean, you know, most of the Google apps at the city and, and look at what's vacant within the city limits and where you're at, because if, like I said, if you look behind the church, you know, you get back there, and you're basically like behind your house. You go back there, how much is vacant along there, I mean, how much, well, I guess, I guess you can't call it vacant, it's, it's, it's just part of the property.
It's part of the property.
Exactly.
I mean, I have three acres, but my house is only.
That was what I was wondering.
Yeah, right, exactly.
It's still owned.
It's still owned, it's developed on, so.
Yep, we turned up the. Okay, now we got it, all right. So, well, that says recreation, open space.
Well, it's just for, that's just for, you know.
Just joking, just for quick reference.
I don't even recall them vacant land.
Yeah, that's what we gotta define, what is the vac- what is considered vacant, like you said. Vacant, vacant land would be land that is literally undeveloped.
Undeveloped, yeah, that.
Undeveloped, right, it doesn't matter how big a lot size is.
Yeah, that's where the confusion is.
Right.
Let's, let's go back to this, let's drop it down to forty-five acres, approximately forty-five acres undeveloped. Then we were punching another, we don't have to be exact on this.
So we're removing the.
This is an idea, it's not.
We're removing the percentage, yeah, and then we're gonna remove them somewhere else.
Our master plan is a, I think you're gonna remove it, there you gotta move it everywhere. Or keep it there and keep it everywhere, whatever you're gonna do.
So you're suggesting that we, that we already take into consideration all the condos being built when we decide, but.
Sure, by the time we get this approved, they'll probably be built.
It'll be twenty, twenty-nine by the time.
Right, but what Mr. Dunbar was suggesting is if we're gonna remove the percentage under vacant, could it just remove the percentage under commercial and under residential?
Yeah, that's fine.
Consistency, yeah.
Does he, let's keep it consistent, huh? And I, I'm okay, I'm okay with that. Well, that, that's a good suggestion, I think we'll take that.
And I don't think anybody's gonna sit here and read this and.
I don't, I don't think anyone's gonna be like, what percentage is that, like?
Yeah, right, I mean, I have to come up with a measuring tape and say, oh, well, you're saying eight percent, but actually it's two point three percent.
Yeah.
Well, let's, yeah, take out the percentages, there's really no need to.
Remove the percentages, keep the acreage with the approximate.
Okay.
With estimations. Good, Mr. Mayor?
Next page.
What's up?
How many pages are there in this thing?
Sixty-three.
Let's keep going.
Good enough for me. All right, we ready?
I don't know how they're figuring it out.
As of when that was published.
You know what, the dark green spot in the south of the border?
Recreation, I mean, we could shoot it here and not get a.
Pretty big area.
Yeah, yes, it is.
So we've got to be thinking, what'd you say, sixty acres? How many acres is that thing right there?
Cause that's the plot vector.
Can we get back to the same here, can we keep?
This way.
I mean, we can look into this too.
Okay. All right, overview of land use in Memphis. That fast reader, slow reader, whoops, sorry.
Hold on a bit, Debbie.
Prying the community development plans for the city of Memphis did not stress the importance of upholding the character.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like.
Where the hell is that stuff? I wasn't even that far.
Well, I've been blasting through, it's in the uh, the, the second paragraph in the middle.
All right. Right here?
Yep.
I saw Friday, well, we don't need that in there. You see it, Tom?
Don't give it to me unless you wanna draft and rewrite it.
Oh, my lord, I mean, here, I mean.
No, I, I just kinda like uh.
These are academics writing this stuff up, you know.
Well, it's not that, it's, I mean, right there, that's like a slap. Prying the community development plans for the city of Memphis did not stress the importance of upholding the character.
That's because we have outside is writing it up.
Holy moses.
No wonder it took them so long to do that.
Really?
Here, Memphis is a great city, don't move there.
Scroll, scroll, scroll up a little bit more.
Which way do you wanna go, you wanna go?
Well, up would be taking it up.
Oh, oh, you want me to, oh, you want me to, you want me to scroll down?
Oh, no, that's, well.
Keep going?
Take the page up, I'm, so it's one of those, it's like.
Or you want me to, you want me to.
No, I'm just looking at, it's like.
Is that better?
Well, surrounded by rural townships, anyway, so, go down, there you go. So, I mean, gee, can we like, eliminate that whole second paragraph?
I'll tell you what, I'll volunteer to just rewrite it and give you all a draft.
That would sound fabulous, Steve.
Are you volunteering?
You're the one's. I'd be like, oh, do you land, let, let me just go through and rewrite it.
And see if I can make it a little more friendly to our city.
Well, a little bit upbeat, I mean, this is saying, hey.
Somebody likes to use a lot of unnecessary vocabulary here. The epicenter of Memphis, we're not talking Houston here.
So Steve, I hate it when you.
But you know, watch where you park, you know, because it's a crap hole, you know.
Yeah.
Don't go there, cause there's a one-legged dance on the water. But it's a great place to live.
Okay, yeah, let me just rewrite this, and everybody can read it and tweak it.
I, I like that idea, all right. There's your existing zoning that you're talking about, Steve.
Yeah.
That's the best part, it's perfection.
So we should probably at least repeat again, the undesigned areas once.
Okay.
I got the list handy, just add those in there.
Yes.
Do they specify them there?
I don't think so.
Okay, so you just wanna say it, restate it again?
Yeah, put it in there again.
Well, here, seeing that we got conflicting areas and zoning, did you see that there? Is development pressures increase for the city, the current zoning ordinances complete the conflicts and land uses within neighboring districts. I mean, are they like giving us, are they like grading us?
Yeah, screw Memphis, go to Richmond.
I know, really, just keep going through Memphis, you'll see Emmett, you know.
Well, what do we got?
There, they got people that are related to, you know, their neighbors.
I'll tell you what, let me, let me do that one too.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
They need an entire rewrite in nineteen, I mean, it's just, to me, it's just.
I'll do overland use of Memphis and existing zoning, and I'll just.
Is there more to that, is it more, is there more existing?
There's a little, there's a couple more from the county. On the next page on twenty. Yeah, let me, let me do that too.
You said it was people from the county that wrote this?
Mm-hmm.
Now I see. Okay.
Well, you know, the thing is, they've been looking at everything we had going on. Can remember, this was a long time ago.
Yeah, what is this, two thousand fifteen?
We straightened a lot of stuff up.
Yeah, we made progress, so.
Okay, so that's the current zoning map, I don't think so.
Yeah, we'll come, are we gonna come back to maps later?
Yeah, we're gonna.
All the maps have to be corrected.
All right. Regional land use summary, she uses summary, but they say that. This needs a rewrite.
Figured it would.
Wow, this is, yeah, probably, wow.
It's like he's writing a professional white paper or something.
He's writing, he's writing paper.
Uh, it, it's just not very friendly to read and.
No, it isn't, I mean, like I said, it's very demeaning. You know, like.
I mean, just the style of it, just like very, very academic and.
Yeah.
Like he's writing like, like a, like.
These, these are two professors who write for each other, you know, not students.
Not students, yeah.
So these guys were two couple of young guys, not long out of college, so.
Obviously.
That's what I've got kind of classic like that.
They wanted to do something fancy important, so they stuck with.
Patting themselves on the back, saying, hey, look, we're a lot smarter than last.
Lot of white is written big twenty-five letters.
That's what I'm seeing with a lot of the words we're using, don't, they're, yeah, overdone.
So what do you think, um, I, I mean, there's just a lot of degrading comments, is what I was.
All right, I'll look over, I'll, I'll do a rough draft of that one too. Go ahead.
Okay, we'll begin on, I'm sure we'll be much better. Here we go, infrastructure and transportation.
Do we wanna save section four for?
Yeah, let's.
Is that what section four is?
We're at time.
We're at time, where are we at here?
Seven thirty.
Okay, so.
We technically could go for another hour, but.
Yeah. Well, we're good there, so. Oh, Lordy.
Public meetings are like two hours before you have to.
Page forty-one, and it, there was a lot of, there was a lot of updating.
Now we see why this.
Are they're not, yeah.
That was C lawn.
Right.
She wants her white one. We got that dog. We got a lot of board.
It's not as gloomy as.
All right, moving on, comments with commissioners. Anybody have any insight or?
Public hearing, right?
Just go around, go around the table.
That'd be Thanksgiving.
Just go around the table, so everybody gets a chance.
Yeah, Mr. Riley, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Dunbar?
Um, I should've brought this up when we did the bylaws.
Absolutely.
Um, we do now have to sign a code of conduct pursuant to our uh, bylaws, I kept it really as.
Short, sweet, simple?
Short, sweet, didn't want it to be invasive. If we, if we don't wanna sign it now, we just wanna read it and sign it at the next meeting, that's fine, um, but.
We will be.
I don't see it, I don't foresee it.
But all of Memphis House, if we get out of line.
Well, it's just, I mean, it's, we learned a lot of stuff from this class and.
See, he just signed it and read it.
It's just more of us saying, if you don't have anything nice, don't say anything at all.
Right. Um, yeah.
Keep it professional.
Keep it professional.
Yeah. There's the eights.
Yep.
Sign the paper, old man.
Roger left.
I said, Donna, the secretary. It just had to make sure you can put a spot in there where you need to pay ten hundred dollars to read it.
Make a bullpen.
I'm telling you, with this Dropbox, it's so much, like, it was kinda shambled in the beginning, but now that we're kind of on track, um, it's great just to see everything there, everybody has access to it.
Yeah, it's a great tool, Tom, that really, that helps out so.
And it's, and like I said, it saves paper, so you get this master plan. And instead of when we make corrections, and then we get the updated corrections, and that's more paper, and where does it all go after we're all done? In the shredder here, we can make it, we can see the updated version, everybody has access to it. Um, in regards to uh, emails, like I said, I will talk with Donna, um, to see if that's a possibility. If it is not, my suggestion to you would be going to, I don't like Gmail, cause it seems so unprofessional. Um, that's why I use currently dot com, which is AT&T. And create an email there with your first name, dot last name, first name hyphen last name at currently dot com, set up your own password, once you get that, um.
Well, let's see what Donna has to say about.
Yeah, yeah. Once we have, see what they say there.
Cause that should also apply for council, and.
Everybody.
Um, anybody within the city, correct.
Anybody doing.
I like, yeah, yeah, exactly.
What's your email address to the city?
The mayor's.
Mayor.
Yeah.
At Comcast dot net.
That's it, all we have to do is put something with, uh.
Comcast dot.
Our name, city of Memphis, dot Comcast dot net.
I think, I think the city's Gmail, isn't it? I don't think they're the same.
Oh, now.
It's Comcast.
It's Comcast, cause that's who.
I actually despise Comcast's email, it's just, I have so much trouble getting it out of it, I don't know what it is, I don't know if it's me. I mean, I have two Comcast.
It's not you.
My fiction is.
It's them, it's not you. I mean, because I have Gmail, which is easy, Comcast is nothing but a headache. I've got four email addresses and Comcast is nothing but a pain in the butt.
I wanted to tell you how many I have, uh, these six different emails, and I have, you know, one hundred. Five different telephone numbers. Wow, I love it.
I'll just do one.
That's a lot to manage. Uh, well, from what I do and.
I just graduated from small city.
So, okay, comments?
I have that much.
I have one.
Okay, no comments from the mayor? Uh, any other commissioners, council?
Yeah, just real quick, uh, we talked about the tax zoning description, so we're, you're aware of that. Just ballpark figure, we're talking about the, the, uh, the development, Memphis Metals, sixty-eight units, gross, that's gonna put about twenty million gross value on the city by the time we're done. So half of that's taxes, just to get a, an idea. For growing, but it's gonna be more.
Do condo owners? I know that, I know that.
I thought that renters don't pay.
That's your apartment taxes. But if you buy a condo, whether it be in a condo unit or.
Yeah, they said they would, they're shooting for the low three hundreds, we're gonna have.
I have a friend of a friend just bought one, he goes, I just bought a house in Memphis for three hundred thousand, and I'm like, where? He's like, come refer. Then, brand new, he goes, yeah, it's brand new, and some have basements and some don't.
Does he have basement?
I don't know which one he has.
Some don't, yeah, cause at first they said they're gonna be like two or four.
So they pay school.
Yeah, he paid, he was right around three hundred when he was out, when he was come. After whatever.
All right, so, any other comments?
Nope.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Mayor motion?
Second.
Mr. Locke, second, all in favor? Aye.